Whitfield County Board of Commissioners planning meeting to order for June 26, 2023. Turn it over to Jim Linderdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to declare we do have a quorum tonight. All members are present. And we need to review the minutes from the previous meeting. Everybody had a chance to read. Any comments, additions, deletions?
Motion to approve.
Second. And the motion is approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Got that. Tonight, we do have seven issues or requests to deal with. Five are in the county, two are in the city. Before we get to them, Mr. Ethan Calhoun from the Northwest Georgia Regional Office will review the procedures and requirements for those who'd like to either speak for or against. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting tonight will follow our set agenda, which if you don't have a copy of that, you're welcome to take one from out front. And on that agenda, for each of our items in the meeting tonight, our procedure will be exactly the same. And that procedure is the chairman will introduce the item on the agenda. I will come forward as staff and give a presentation and render a recommendation to the planning commission to approve or deny the rezoning. Once my comments have been heard, the chairman will ask for the petitioner, and that is the individual who's requesting to rezone their property, to come forward to the podium and answer any questions that may come up from the planning commission or board of commissioners. Once the petitioner's comments have been heard, the chairman will ask if anyone else other than the petitioner would like to speak in favor of the rezoning. Once all comments, positive comments, have been heard for the rezoning, the chairman will then ask if anyone here tonight would like to speak in opposition or against the rezoning. It's very important that if you intend to speak in opposition to any of the rezonings on tonight's agenda, that you go back outside to the table out front and grab one of the two forms that is a release form. We will need your name as well as printed and signed in order for you to be able to speak in opposition. And you'll take that form and hand it to me before you approach the podium with your comments. That's a state law that we follow, and it also helps me to ensure that we get your name and information correct in the minutes so that we can make sure your comments are passed on and made part of the permanent record. And once the opposition remarks have been heard, we will, or the chairman will then ask if the petitioner would like to come back and address any of the issues that were raised in the opposition's remarks. And if during the petitioner's rebuttal, no new information is presented, the chairman will then close that public hearing and move to the next item. And again, that same process will occur for every item on the agenda. So it takes an opportunity for the public to give us feedback for and against. In the second half of the meeting, the planning commission for each of the items on the agenda will deliberate and make a recommendation. And that recommendation will be sent forth to the board of commissioners and, in this case, to the mayor and council of the city of Dalton, depending on which item it is. So the final decisions tonight, or the final decisions for these items will not occur tonight. Tonight's purpose of this meeting is to hold a public hearing, hear comments for and against, and to then send a recommendation forward to the governing authorities, board of commissioners, and the mayor and council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ethan. The first request is here from Brian Spence to rezone from general commercial C2 to R5 tractable land .42 acres on Hill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We see here the first request going from general commercial to rural residential. And we can see here the subject property on the south side of Hill Road. You see that in the center of the zoning map, this request, how it would affect a zoning map would be to change the existing zoning of the property from C2, which we see as the red color on the zoning map, to the orange color, which is the rural residential zone district. And so you can see here that essentially all southern and western adjacent property is already zoned R5. You look to the north, we see the R2 zone district. We look next, we can see existing development from the aerial perspective. We can see the elementary school also very nearby the subject property. We can see some single-family dwellings across the street, and of course, commercial to the east. A close look at this property, you can currently see it is undeveloped. The petitioner's request would, of course, create the opportunity to develop this site for residential use for either single-family detached manufactured homes or the potential for duplexes. When we look at the site and its ability for development, you can see that it is a site that certainly can be developed as well as for residential purpose. When we look at the adjacent commercial property at the intersection there to the east, we can see there is some separation between that property to the east and the subject property. So a buffer could be placed there in the future if any future construction or changes to that commercial property were to take place. In terms of what kind of impact this would have based on the existing and surrounding development and zoning, again, the zone district, R5 rural residential, very common in this area, and of course, changing the zoning from general commercial to R5 is a great low, lower intensity than what exists there now with general commercial. So this would be reducing the overall impact to adjacent residential properties based on it's changing from commercial to residential and particularly a district that's already common in the area. We also found no issue with the comprehensive plan, the emerging suburban character area, which would fit based on the fact that the existing zoning that's being requested here is adjacent to the property and quite common in this area. So we see no conflict based on the established development and zoning in the area. And I'm happy to answer any questions. The, of course, recommendation from staff is that this rezoning can be approved.
Questions? Yeah? Nope. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm just wanting to rezone it to build two houses there. The land will be subdivided.
It'll be subdivided?
Yep.
Two duplexes?
Two houses.
Two houses, oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Well, they kinda like the ones on...
On, uh, Wagner, by the DMV. Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Go back there. Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to speak in favor? Does anybody like to speak in opposition? That said, we'll move on to the next request. Next request is from Michael Hill to rezone from general agriculture to manufacturing M2 tractable land 28.5 acres at 220 Cross Plains Boulevard. This is in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This rezoning, of course, is a slightly different type of land use than before. What we're looking at here is being rezoned from general agriculture to heavy manufacturing, which, of course, is a significant change in land use intensity. And when we take a look at the zoning map and what this rezoning would do in terms of existing zoning, is we see in this area a mix of zone districts. In particular, as we look along Cross Plains Boulevard, we see a pretty sizable existing heavy manufacturing zone district. And we look also across the subject property, across Cross Plains Boulevard, to the south of the subject property, and we see a sizable M2 district sitting as an island currently. And then, of course, as you move further to the west, we can see just a point that it's nearby the Carbondale Industrial Park, though it is detached. Next, we look at the existing development in this area from a recent aerial image, and you can see here that the subject property, of course, is undeveloped as it stands. And we can see that on that property, previously seen on the zoning map for industrial and manufacturing zoning, we can see that a good number of those properties along Cross Plains Boulevard have already been developed for industrial use. And of course, we can see the close-up of the subject property. It is worth pointing out that to the sort of southwest of the subject property, along that boundary, you'll see there in the aerial image, it sort of shows up a little clearer, that there is a utility, large utility easement there with some aerial lines traveling across it. There's a nearby substation to the subject property. In fact, when we look here, you can see that substation there to the southeast, adjacent to the existing industrial building. And so we can see here that industry and manufacturing are not uncommon in this area and already adjacent to the subject property, and again, being also quite near the Carbondale I-75 interchange. And of course, being in this area, utilities are also rather sufficient for industrial capacity. The request specifically, the petitioner can speak to more detail. The request itself noted the plans for a trucking terminal, so freight logistics would be the primary use and intent for this rezoning and for the development of this property. If we take a look next, we can see that the comprehensive plan has noted this area to be within the rural residential character area. This is in an interesting location with a number of different uses occurring as it stands and a number of different zone districts. The Cross Plains Boulevard corridor itself, overall, has a more industrial and manufacturing character well-established than it does residential. We also see the nearby interchange character area, which is common around all of Whitfield County's interstate interchanges. And as part of the interchange character area, industrial and manufacturing land use is one of the recommended uses for those properties based on the proximity and logistic advantage of being nearby the interchange. So in terms of impact to adjacent properties, there is some separation from any existing residential development, that existing residential development being along South Dixie Highway and already in an area that has long since been developed for industrial land use. We do not anticipate any negative economic impact on the adjacent, or not adjacent residential, but nearby residential properties, and we expect that this would be a continuation of an already established land use in this area, being industrial and manufacturing. With all that being said, staff give a recommendation to approve. And I will note that, of course, because of the property to the north, east, and west, wrapping around the subject property, still being zoned general agriculture, this property would be required if it's rezoned and developed to provide for a buffer around the periphery of its property. So three sides of the property would have to have a buffer as well. Just wanted to point that out, as that would be part of any development. In the zoning ordinance, there wouldn't need to be any special conditions. Happy to answer any questions? Believe that is 30 feet.
30 feet. Other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Yes?
Any... Any comments for...
Uh, no. We are in the building that's kind of southwest to it, if you go back to the aerial view, currently. And our building that we put, that we're proposing to put on the site is just like the two directly across the street from it now, one of them which we currently occupy.
Nope. Questions over there?
Are you already manufacturing up the other ones?
We don't do any manufacturing. It's just all cross dock and logistics and transportation. Correct. Yes.
Anybody would like to speak in favor? Anybody would like to speak in opposition? Excellent. We shall move on to the next request. It's to hear the request of Hunter and Hannah Penta to rezone from rural residential R5 to GA, tractable land 16 acres at 1656 Tricam Road in Rocky Face. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a fairly straightforward and simple request to rezone from rural residential to general agriculture. And we'll take a look at the zoning map, and we can see the subject property being currently R5 and an island of R5 entirely surrounded by both the general agriculture and suburban agriculture zone districts. So very simply put, this will be absolutely no different than anything that already exists in this area in terms of zoning or land use, lot density, and permitted uses. When we take a look at the existing development in the area, we see that it overlays very similarly to the zoning. We see large lots, mostly agriculture, forestry, no high-density development, no suburban development for the most part, low-density agriculture and single-family. Take a close look at the subject property. We can see it here, mostly wooded, and of course, general agriculture would permit any sort of agricultural uses, up to two detached single-family dwellings and any sort of accessory agriculture structures, which would be, again, exactly like what we see throughout this area. And we can see that in the comprehensive plan, it's in the rural agricultural reserve character area, and of course, the GA zone district is the perfect zone district for this character area. So we identify no issues whatsoever with this rezoning from the staff's perspective and recommend an approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Hunter or Hannah Peter?
Um, we are just wanting to build a house and farm. There's already an existing house, so that's why we want to switch it, and we also want to farm. So, pretty straightforward.
You're gonna add a house?
Yeah, we're planning on eventually adding another house. It might not be immediately, but eventually.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody would like to speak in favor? Anybody would like to speak against? Okay, we'll move on to the next request. This is from Joshua and Jessica Atchley to rezone from heavy manufacturing M2 to GA, tractable land 6.96 acres on 4690 South Dixie Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request is an interesting one and does have some history. You all may recall, several months ago, Mr. Atchley came before us with a rezoning request on a different property where his family currently lives with a very similar request in order to do a meat processing and packing facility on that property. That rezoning was denied. Mr. Atchley has searched for other properties on which he could occupy as a residential home, as well as operate his meat processing facility. And the only zone district where those two uses would be allowed would be the general agriculture zone district. And the rezoning itself would be for general agriculture, which would also include a special use permit for the meat processing facility. And we take a look, first and foremost, at the zone zoning map and the existing zoning in this area. You can see that the subject property, as it stands, in that purple color, is heavy manufacturing. It's an island, a spot zone in this area entirely surrounded by the residential and agricultural zone districts. Of course, just as a quick note, the subject property is in excess of the minimum five acres required for the general agriculture zone district, so it certainly is a good candidate for general agriculture zoning. And we can see that it's adjacent agriculture, both to the east and the south. In terms of existing land use, we'll see here, very similar to the zoning, we do see some nonconformity to the south of the subject property, a fairly sizable manufactured home or mobile home park to the south and the southwest of the subject property. But for the most part, we see conforming agriculture and residential use in this area. The former use of the subject property was an automobile salvage yard. And you can see in this aerial photograph, which has not been very recently updated, but since this aerial photograph was taken, that business has since dissolved or moved, and all of the automobiles, the salvage parts and cars, all of that has been removed. There also has been an environmental study on the subject property. No contaminations were found that would require, would require any sort of remediation, which sometimes can come along with that type of use. So that has been done, and there were no issues cited as part of that. There are some existing structures on this property. You can sort of see those on the aerial map there. We can see just in the middle of that property, on the road frontage of South Dixie Highway, there is a single-family detached dwelling that had been there long before this salvage yard, and the salvage yard business utilized it as their offices. The petitioner has plans to remodel that home and reoccupy it as a, their dwelling, as their residence. There are two accessory buildings as part of this property that are metal-clad, open buildings that were used as part of this business as well. The petitioner is planning to develop or to utilize one of the existing buildings you can see here on their attached site plan, to use an existing building on this property to house their meat processing facility. And you can see there, the home proposed to be used, as well as a 20-foot buffer around the periphery of the subject property to the, to the north and to the west and the south, which would be adjacent to any of the residential properties on those boundaries. That would be a similar buffer that we would require in a typical commercial zone district, and being that this is a sort of a quasi-commercial use of the property, being that meat packing or meat processing would occur there, the buffer would be appropriate. And that can be made as part of a motion as a condition on this property as well. And in terms of the comprehensive plan, future development for this area, we can see that it's in the rural neighborhood revitalization character area, which is a character area intended to promote investment and infill development for residential use, similar to that which has already been established in the area. And what we see here is very similar to the established land use in the area. In terms of zoning, general agriculture, again, very common in this area, single-family residential, again, very common. This wouldn't change really the lot density or anything like that on this property. The only new character that it would introduce would be for meat processing. But when we take a look at the existing manufacturing zone district and the large swath of uses that could be placed on this property for light commercial or for light industrial type uses, it doesn't really make sense for this property to be zoned for manufacturing based on its size. And of course, the burden, potential burden on adjacent property owners is much, much higher in manufacturing. We believe that the meat processing facility would be of minimal impact to the neighbors and existing development in this area, especially with the buffer proposed on the site plan. The recommendation from staff is that the rezoning be approved and that a condition be placed on the property to include the 20-foot buffer and that the rezoning be based off the site plan for the special use permit. I'm happy to answer any questions.
For the environmental study, was that a phase one, phase two?
Phase one.
Phase one? No impact?
None was noted.
That's it. Thank you. Joshua and Jessica Atchley? Hello?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'd like to say we would appreciate the opportunity to rezone and build a business.
Okay. And you are, this layout that is on the screen now, that is generally what you're trying to do?
Exactly. We're using existing structures.
Okay.
Not adding to it at all.
And you understand the 20-foot buffer?
Yes, sir. It already exists.
Yeah. Lot of growth.
We're not gonna tear it down.
Yeah. Questions?
Straightforward.
Straightforward? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else would like to speak in favor?
I would. Fit me, all right? Um... From our point of view, this meat processing facility would be wonderful to have here in the county. We've went through the fact that we needed four hogs processed this last year, and it's a 12-to-24-month wait anywhere else. And I think that we have enough farms in this county to make this be a good idea. We had to go to Ringgold and use a deer processor who could handle hogs. We shouldn't have had to do that. We still are agriculture, and I am so tickled to see, first, a family business, a local business, and something we definitely need come in. And I just want to say, I'm really happy about them coming in. I think this is great for the county. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak in favor? Anybody would like to speak in opposition? Very well, we will move on to the next request. We hear the request of Tammy Winter to rezone from low-density family residential R2 to R5, tractable land 1.38 acres at 668 Mill Creek Road. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Remember my clicker here. We'll take a look at this rezoning, which is, of course, to rezone from R2 low-density single-family to rural residential. And just a little history on this property. The petitioner can, of course, go into greater detail. However, the, basically, what initiated this rezoning, the request, was that the subject property has had, for a number of years now, a mobile or manufactured home on the subject property. It has been the primary residence of the petitioner now for quite some time. And some while ago, a vehicle left Mill Creek Road, struck the dwelling, and caused a fair amount of damage. They have since gotten to the point to where, I believe, insurance settlements and so forth have occurred, and they are looking to replace the existing home with another manufactured home of a larger square footage, a larger size than the one that exists there now. A little history on nonconforming uses, with this property being in nonconformity and that no manufactured homes or mobile homes can be permitted in the R2 zone district. However, that because this home was damaged beyond the control of the petitioner, then they are, of course, allowed the opportunity to replace or repair the existing dwelling under the current zoning without a need to change the zone district. However, they have indicated that they would like a larger home, and they would like that to be a manufactured home. And the only way that can occur in this case would be for this property to be rezoned to R5, and of course, the property is not large enough for other zone districts that would allow the manufactured home for general agriculture or things like that, and R5 is the least intensive zone district that this would be viable in. If we look at the zone zoning map, you'll see the subject property in the center, and we look at the zone districts in the area, we'll see that the R2, that's that lime-green color, is the, probably the most prominent zone district in this area. If we look just to the north at the tip of the subject property, you see the R1 zone district in that yellow color. And when we see that zone district, it's also quite large and prominent throughout this area. The R2 and R1 zone districts are the most restrictive zone districts in the unified zoning ordinance. They only permit site-built, single-family detached dwellings of low density. And that is what we see in this area in terms of zoning. And when we take a look at the aerial photograph, we'll see that the lots and existing development mirrors that, with only few exceptions, very, very few exceptions, along Mill Creek Road in this area, the subject property being one of those nonconforming properties. We can see here, the, one of the other nonconforming properties in this area is just to the east, adjacent to the subject property. And again, these make up a very small number of nonconforming R2 properties along Mill Creek Road throughout this area. And again, this, the existing dwelling can be replaced under the current zoning as long as... And again, this, the existing dwelling can be replaced under the current zoning as long as it doesn't exceed the size of the current dwelling. Another thing to point out is that this property is impacted by the flood zone. And with that impact being there, development can occur, the, the property can still be replaced, the, the existing home can still be replaced. Their existing septic system will still perk or will still be approved for them to hook up to that. There's also a pressurized sewer line down Mill Creek Road that was installed a number of years ago in order to address the failing septic systems throughout this area because there are some soil conditions, poor soil conditions throughout this area. Although again, the existing subject property, the existing septic system on the subject property will pass muster. That has been addressed and that will not be an issue. If any, at point in the future, they were to attempt to attach to the sanitary sewer, that would not be a problem. They would be able to do that at any point in the future. And the comprehensive plan shows this area to be within the suburban character area. You can also see the emerging suburban character area and some of the larger properties that have not yet really been developed for suburban use. But when we take a look again at the existing development in this area, we see R1 and we see R2 prevalently and dominantly throughout this area. In most cases, homes built in this area far and exceed the R2 and R1 zone district. So to place an R5 zone district at this location would create an entering wedge with the potential for additional properties, adjacent properties to be developed and therefore increase the amount of what is now a non-conformity. And so this, the staff analysis for this rezoning is not to approve based on the fact that it would bring in the R5 zone district at this location with the potential to expand and with the understanding that the petitioner can replace the existing dwelling without any issue as long as the replacement home does not exceed the size of the existing dwelling. Happy to answer any questions.
When was the house damaged, how long ago?
The petitioner can answer to exactly how long that was. It's my understanding it was over a year ago.
Over a year? And it hasn't been occupied from that period of time?
I believe it has been occupied in that time. It has, it wasn't destroyed, it was, it was, I think significantly damaged.
So if I understand you correctly, he can replace it as long as it's the same size?
That's correct.
Long time.
Yeah, I think for some time.
What's the minimum size for a site built, R2, like 1,100?
1,200. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Okay, Tammy Winter?
Hello?
Hello? Do you have any comments before we ask questions?
No, I was just wanting to rezone so we could get us another house, a double wide. We want to put a double wide in where our single wide is off the foundation now, has been for about 20 months.
Is off the foundation?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, we've been living like that for 20 months.
What is the square footage of the present?
1,280 square feet. It's a single wide right now.
Okay, and the one that you want to put in, how large?
Yeah, it's 28 by 60. It's what we're wanting to go back like, it's a little over 1,500 square feet.
How long is the mobile home been there?
Uh, we got that one in 1993. Bought it in 1993. I've been there for 50, 51 years. And this is the first time it's ever happened. We've had a lot of accidents there, but it's the first time our house got knocked off the foundation. And that's just why we're wanting to rezone.
You put that home there in 93?
Yes.
And you've been there 51 years?
Yeah, we had a older model back in, yeah, when I grew up there.
A mobile home prior to this one? And 93 is when zoning went into effect, roughly?
Yes.
When, when the zoning was established, they allowed to keep the previous, when the zoning was established, they were allowed to keep the mobile home.
What exactly happened, a tree or a vehicle?
Car.
There's a little curve right there if you go too fast.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, there'd have been more ricks there and I got fingers and toes, but it's the first time anybody hit our house.
It'll wake you up.
Have you considered, did you look into a stick-built house there or did you, did that even, was that even a thought?
Uh, yeah, we had thought about it.
But your preference is to put a mobile home?
Yeah.
And you put one the same size?
The same size as we have now? Let's see, I think it's gotta be, it had to be 50 feet from the creek because we are in flood zone now. So we're just gonna try to go back with a 28 by 60, you know, whatever we had.
I know we're trying to do that, but if, if, would you be able to live with the same square footage that you have now?
Yeah. We just wanted to upgrade from a single wide, you know, to a double wide.
Sure.
Because that was not livable, we gotta tear it down. After remodeling it, we remodeled it the summer before. Put a lot of money into it. Now it's just...
This is for my own education. Do you have to get flood insurance when it's a mobile home?
Uh, yeah, we will now because in 93 it wasn't, we didn't have to have it.
But I know when a site built, you know...
He changed the map. That's the reason why you have to have it now.
Yeah, years ago when we got the one in 93, they said it wasn't in the flood zone, we couldn't get flood insurance. But when tornadoes came through in April and the floods came, it ran under our conditioner system and they wouldn't pay for it.
To clarify that, as long as you finance it, their bank requires it.
Right.
If it's paid for, you don't have to have it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have, yeah, we're gonna have to have flood insurance.
Yeah.
For this one.
Thank you.
Robert, could we, could it be restricted to one dwelling, a lower R5?
Condition, R5 with a condition.
You can, you can put a condition such as that on it.
Or leave it as R2 with a variance.
It's R2. Ma'am, are you okay with just being able to have one dwelling on that property?
Just a single?
Just, just one house, one house or one mobile home or what kind of?
Oh, yeah, one, yeah, that's all we have now.
So the only issue is to replace it for another 1,280 square foot?
She's wanting about 300 more square feet.
I know that, but if she can live with the 1,280...
But they don't make, they say they don't make the 1,280 square feet anymore. So it's 16 by 80. It was living quarters of 16 by 80 and now they said they're not allowed to have them in the state of Georgia.
But, but to follow up on John's question, you could leave it R2 with a, either a variance or something so she could have a bigger square footage?
That was my next question, variance, would that be applicable?
Is there, is there a way to, to allow her to get that extra 300 square feet and limit the potential for a second home to be built or a duplex or something like that?
Sure.
If it, if it stays R2, you're gonna end up hearing a lot more requests like this as far as staying R2 with a variance of having a mobile home, whereas R5 now is for mobile homes, one of the... Correct?
One of the main issues that she's trying to replace, place for her to live.
Oh, I know, I know, when she's wanting something nicer and bigger, so I don't see anything wrong with it, but that's...
But that's a good point, John, I mean, so there's not a...
She can keep it as an R2 and it still have the living quarters.
Right, there's no, but you can't have a variance that says that you can, that you can put a mobile home in an R2. So that's...
Well, maybe I misspoke, maybe if, if we went to R5, as John suggested, you could, you could limit it to one structure.
You can do that, that's, that gets to be problematic, uh, but it's, but you can do that, that's legal.
Okay.
Yes.
And it's, it's because they changed the size of the trailer.
They agree with it.
Could you not just raise the size limit, I mean, and, and keep it the same, keep the zoning the same? Because you have a existing dwelling there now, you're not changing anything. I mean, what's 300 extra feet gonna do?
It don't, it don't matter.
Now on R2, you can have a mobile home, even if it's grandfathered.
Well, why, what she, she's asking for is bigger than what the minimum is, so it doesn't matter for the size, huh?
According to the zoning...
It's stiff.
R5 though?
No, not on R5, but if we just let it like it is.
If you left it R2, then it's not a zone for R, R2 is a, for a manufactured home, R5 is...
Yeah, but, I mean, she's there now. It's already there.
And she got, she's wanting a bigger place, I mean, it's no problem.
Yeah, but in R2, it is, it is.
All right.
And it was not her fault, I mean, she had, she had known it was a good thing, but they...
It was 1:30 in the morning, Liz in bed asleep.
All right, any other direct questions?
No.
No, all right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody would like to speak in favor? All right, anybody would like to speak in opposition? We'll get to you.
Well, my name is Barnett Chitwood, I live at 3244 Leona Drive in Mill Creek Estates. Seems periodically that representatives of our subdivision have to come by here and reintroduce ourselves to you guys. Because periodically, up and down the Mill Creek corridor, we hear requests for R3 zones and now R5 zones. So I stand before you tonight representing the subdivisions that are down Mill Creek Road that are adamantly opposed to the creation of the R5 zone district at this location. The R5 introduces the possibility that smaller, single-family lots will occur where a larger lot format already exists. So the fact that public sewer is down Mill Creek Road, that explains part of it, but I also know that that line was not put in to serve the Mill Creek corridor as much as it is to serve the farm in failing systems further south of there. I, um, we cannot support the R5. The R5 not only allows the small lot format, 7,500 square foot, but it also allows duplexes. And the critical thing here is to understand that if the R5 is created, then it creates a precedent for all the adjacent vacant land that is around this area. And if it's not vacant, then some of that area is subject to re, to be redeveloped, to clear off what's there and redevelop. And the prospect that multifamily in the form of duplexes could be in the R5 zone district is devastating and unacceptable. What I have tonight is I have a couple of petitions. I don't know how to do this for you guys. This petition is from Mill Creek Estates and this petition is from the enclave subdivision Eden Park and Mill Creek Road. And I can introduce one over here. Do you guys want to look at it?
You'll let them look at it?
Well, just give it to me. But anyway, I can tell you that even though you only have two petitions in front of you, there was petitions introduced into the farm, the enclave, Paradise Ridge, Buckingham, Bradbury Ridge subdivision, Mill Creek Estates and Eden Valley. Now, I don't know who is here, who might be here besides myself to pose this request, but for reasons that I would say of business and vacation, travel, sickness and people's general schedules, some of the petitions that started in these other subdivisions may not have developed, but it does not mean that those folks are not affected by this request. I need to speak just for the moment about the issue of non-conformity that I believe was mentioned by some of the commissioners. Non-conformity is, is a necessity in any zoning ordinance. The desire is to create a zoning map where there's a minimum amount of non-conformity, but you cannot create a zoning map without having some non-conformity someplace or another. And the idea of non-conformity is that over time, things might convert to something that is conforming with the ordinance. The other comment that I'd like to make is what I think I heard one of the commissioners referring to is granting a variance potentially in the R2 zone district to satisfy this request. But a use variance in a zone district that allows a use that is not allowed by that underlying zone district, that's, that's illegal. You cannot grant a variance for a use when that use is otherwise illegal in that zone district. So I would offer to try to answer your questions, if you have any, but the, my remarks basically are that we adamantly oppose the creation of an R5 zone district at this location. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chitwood. And we do have others who would like to speak. We do have others who would like to speak.
I do not know.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Sir?
This is all foreign to me, I'm a physician and been retired here in Dalton, worked here for 30 years. Bill McKay, William McKay. My concern about changing it to R5 would be in the future if it were sold, that high-density housing could be put there. For the very reason that they need a new mobile home, because of the curve there, which is a blind curve going north and south. And usually if it changes to say, uh, high-density housing, there are a lot of young families there, a lot of children. And my concern would be for children getting out of the street, chasing a soccer ball or a football, climbing the fence to get over, to get out there. So especially at dusk, especially in the fog, it's a, it's a place where because of the very reason a car hit her home, she needs something there. Now, if there could be a contingency of some sort, leave it R2, but so she can have a little bigger home, I would be for that, excuse me, but opposed to rezoning to R5.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to speak in opposition? Ma'am, would you like to rebut? Come on up. Come on up.
I was just wanting to say that I was here, I was on that resident before any of those subdivisions were. I was there first, you know?
Mm-huh.
Before any of those subdivisions came.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna close. Public portion on this one, and that is the last one for the commissioners tonight. So they will be exiting, but we will continue on with two within the city. Okay, hang on a second. Next is to hear the request of Sandra Martin to rezone from heavy manufacturing M two to residential R five, point four six acres on Levert, Levert Drive in Dalton. This is in the city. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have an interesting rezoning request here, um, to rezone from heavy manufacturing to rural residential. And when we see the, uh, intent for this request is to divide or to take one of the lots on the subject property in order to create another buildable lot. And when we look at zoning in this area, you'll see that heavy manufacturing, obviously, is the, um, most dominant Zone District in this area and adjacent on all borders of the subject property in all directions. When we take a look next, we'll see here, it's, uh, well within the city of Dalton's boundaries, it's not on the periphery. Next, we'll look at existing development in this area. This is the part that's somewhat interesting or unique, and that is Levert Drive has been a pocket neighborhood now for a number of years, I believe, since the late fifties or early sixties, based on tax assessor's records. And you can see the smaller tracts of land along Levert Drive, uh, that are developed for residential use, single-family detached. Just like the subject property has one single-family dwelling currently on it, that is single-family detached. Um, the tracts of land along Levert Drive are most similar, uh, to the R five Zone District based on their lot size, the setbacks, and existing development. And this is, um, somewhat similar to the previous property in non-conforming status. The interesting thing here again is that we have this pocket neighborhood that, as you can see on this aerial photograph, is entirely surrounded by rather decent-sized industrial development, several industrial developments. And, uh, when we take a look typically at manufacturing and residential Zone Districts, it's not ideal, uh, to have these sort of circumstances, but we must also take into consideration, um, the consistency along Levert Drive. This isn't a single residential property surrounded by manufacturing uses, this is a small pocket neighborhood within this industrial area. So, we take a look again here at the, uh, development along Levert Drive. Again, you can see almost all of the properties accessed in Levert Drive, with the exception of the property to the south being industrial or single-family residential. In terms of what impact this could have on adjacent properties, of course, there would be no negative impact to any of the residential properties, the adjacent manufacturing properties. The only thing that would be required would be a buffer on the, uh, adjacent manufacturing property, if they ever expanded their operation that exists now. They'd be required to install a buffer where it's adjacent to the subject property. Uh, but again, as it stands, we expect no negative impact to any of the values of the adjacent properties. And in terms of the reality with the existing zoning, manufacturing and industrial uses are not feasible on attractive land this small. So it, it really doesn't make sense for this property to be zoned for manufacturing. And due to the condition and consistency along Levert Drive of the residential neighborhood, these houses are in very good condition, have been maintained, so we don't see any instance of blight or any such thing like that. So we believe that, uh, this, uh, neighborhood, this pocket neighborhood, uh, could exist without any negative impact. The future development map shows this within the town neighborhood revitalization character area. That character area is intended to promote residential investment in areas, uh, sort of like this, where infill development, residential development could occur, or, uh, remodeling of existing residential homes and neighborhoods. So this rezoning would be in perfect conformity with the intent of the comprehensive plan and the future development map at this location. Staff analysis is a, um, straightforward approval with no additional conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Milton? Sandra Milton? Sandra Milton, are you here? Well, we will have to table this to next month, to the no-show. And if she doesn't show then, we'll be denied. Next case is Benjamin Cordova to seeking to rezone from heavy manufacturing M two to transitional residential R six parcel point five acres, five nine acres, located at nineteen oh five Abutment Road. Ethan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have here a request to be rezone, um, from the, excuse me, the R six, uh, uh, Zone District to, I believe, the R seven Zone District in this case. And based on the existing zoning of this property, you may recall some years ago, or some time ago, not too terribly far back, the petitioner had requested to rezone from heavy manufacturing to transitional residential. That rezoning request was approved. The petitioner's plans at that time was to build a quadplex, but due to some issues they ran into with building codes and the property, they, uh, desired to develop this property with two duplex dwellings. It would be two separate dup, duplex dwellings, which would equal the same amount of density that, uh, would have been planned originally in R six, but would allow for multiple structures to be built on a single tract of land. So this wouldn't be a subdivision, not enough land exists to subdivide at this location based on the existing zoning. So the R seven rezoning would basically allow the petitioner to build two duplexes, two primary dwellings, uh, on this single tract of land. This, uh, this location, uh, is similar to the previous rezoning, and essentially with, uh, uh, the street, uh, Marbit Drive being adjacent there, being a pocket neighborhood. We can see the current city boundaries, and we can see the existing development. So along Marbit Drive, we can see several, uh, varying densities, uh, in, in manufactured homes and single-family detached dwellings. So we see another pocket neighborhood along Marbit Drive, very similar to the previous rezoning that we saw a moment ago. So in terms of existing land use and character of this area, residential already exists. Uh, this type of density already exists, uh, along this, uh, throughout this neighborhood. And the change from R six to R seven is a, is a fairly minimal increase in density and intensity of land use in this area. And of course, the majority of adjacent properties outside of the Marbit Drive residential area are manufacturing and industrial, and we see no, uh, concern for property value depreciation of any adjacent property based on this rezoning, if it's approved. I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions, and I'll also quickly point out, uh, it is within the industrial, uh, character area, but you'll see that at the, uh, terminus of Marbit Drive to the east, we can see the suburban character area. So it is near suburban area and area planned for suburban development. And again, the majority of development along Marbit Drive is in fact residential rather than industrial, and suffers from some of the same hardships as the previous rezoning in that these residential tracts along Marbit Drive are too small for conventional industrial or manufacturing, uh, land use. So the recommendation from staff is, uh, to approve. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
No, thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Mr. Cordova?
Uh, last year, we were approved to R six, and, uh, because I got, uh, talked to the inspector and said, just attach three units to the house that already exist. But for technicalities like that, I need to install a fire sprinkler system when it's more than two. So it's extremely expensive, so that's why I decided to apply for R seven. It's not going to be more, it's going to be the same four unit. And that's it, what it's going to be in that lot, it's too small to put more. That's the end of it. Thank you. Questions?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition? That said, that is the final request to be heard in the open meeting tonight. We will go into closed meeting now, you're welcome to stay and listen, but otherwise, uh, you will not be able to interact at this time. Okay, back to number one. Ryan Spencer, Hill Road, duplexes. Two duplexes, comments, motions?
Move approved.
Press moves, David seconds. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is Michael Hill, two twenty Cross Plains Boulevard. That is going to be the transfer terminal or cross, cross decking.
Move approved.
Second.
Jody, uh, makes motion, Chris seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Then there's the request from Hunter and Hannah Painter, uh, Tricam Road in Rocky Face.
Move approved.
Chris makes a motion to approve. Jody seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Request Joshua and Jessica Ashley from M two to G A, forty-six ninety South Dixie Highway, that's the old-
Junkyard.
Yeah, it's the old junkyard going, uh-
Move we approve with the suggested buffer subject to the site plan presented tonight.
Okay, Chris? Eric seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, to hear a request from Tammy Winter, this is on six sixty-eight Mill Creek Road, the mobile home.
This is a very difficult situation. And I understand the, a lot of opposition that it is at the present time. But I don't think we can deny somebody to put, to, to build what they want on the space that they have been there for a long period of time.
Well, there, there's gotta be a solution. I'm very familiar-
I can't vote to approve, but-
That's not my question.
The zoning. No, I mean, I'm very familiar with that area, and, and an R five zoning is not, that, that's, I agree with you there. However, you know, this accident occurred, no, no negligence on their part, you know, and it's, you, you, I'll tell you, you asked them if they could replace the mobile home with the same size, and I'm certainly no expert in the mobile home field, but it sounds to me like maybe that this, the industry standard dimensions may have-
Changed.
Changed over the last, you know, thirty years that that home has been there. So, and I'm kinda looking at Robert, looking at Ethan, there's gotta be some way to, to let her replace her home and stay R two somehow.
Yes, Mr. Chitwood, the answer to that, uh, Jake and I had conferred before the meeting, is that the model that was spoken about during the petitioner's remarks was the single wide model and the length and width of that model not being manufactured anymore, so for them to get that comparable size, they would need to go to the double wide model. So we looked into that, and the fact that they could go to a double wide, uh, they could go to that type of manufactured home, the, the differences or the, the most important factor is the square footage of that home cannot increase. So they can go to the different form, they just can't go to a larger footprint of that home in terms of square footage. So they do have that opportunity to get a newer, nicer, double wide manufactured home. It just simply has to be the same size, it cannot be any larger than the existing home. So they have that, they have that opportunity.
Except it doesn't, that nobody makes it, so if we deny the R five-
Well, I think what he's saying is the one they've got now is a single wide, but there is a model available that is a, a double wide, which may be-
The same-
The square footage would be the same. Comparable, yeah. Sorry.
So instead of-
If we deny the R five, can they allow, can, can the county commissioners come in and, and allow a variance for them to put what they want? So they, so they get the house that they want, but it still remains R two. I think that's not in our lane, but can the county commissioners do that?
No, the, uh-
There's gotta be a way to allow them to have their house, they were just sleeping there.
No, they, they, they can replace the home, they just, and they can get a newer home, they can get the mul, the, the double wide variety, which is newer and improved from what they have now. It simply cannot be larger in square footage based on nonconformity. And because of the nonconforming policy, uh, or, or because of the R two Zone District, is, uh, it was mentioned in the remarks earlier, that by get, by granting a variance, and Robert had attested to this as well, by granting a variance that would allow a, a manufactured home in R two would not be essentially legal, that, that would be essentially a rezoning of the property in terms of the types of uses there, allowing a manufactured home. But as it stands, it is currently zoned, they can absolutely replace this home with a comparably sized unit. And it can be a, a double wide, as long as the square footage is the same.
When I asked her the question, she said that she can do that.
Can do that?
Can you, can you please let us know if you can live with a two hundred and eighty dollar, eighty square feet, double wide?
Twelve hundred eighty.
Twelve eighty?
She can't live in a two eighty.
Twelve eighty.
I don't know where in, but since we will have to replace it, I mean, it wasn't our fault, you know?
Can I speak?
Sure. Wait a minute, well, she can speak. You can tell her. Now, this is not an open meeting anymore? That was just a question posed by Mr. Perez.
I really have a more square footage. It's more, it won't be in payment, you know, I mean, I urged the pay board.
Okay.
And after this accident, we're gonna be in a payment thing.
Well-
You know, we're gonna get what we want, you know, we're gonna have to pay for it, that's why I'm trying to get it.
I understand.
I mean, I understand the obvious.
Where, yeah, our dilemma is trying to get you your home, uh, your dilemma is trying to keep the price down. Any other comments, Jody?
I think at the end of the day, we're gonna have to deny the R five.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So, I, I mean, just, just for future precedence in, in that area.
Let's see, and this, this probably a question for you. If, if they have an R five, and they, they put the sixteen by eight, I mean, the twenty-five, twenty-eight by sixty, can, these restrictions can be put in that properly?
It's not a deed restriction, it'd just be a condition. The problem is you then introduce-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't do that.
So the condition can be the-
No, condition what?
That they allow, they can put the twenty-eight by sixty, they want.
And nothing else?
Nothing else.
You can put that condition, but it, but you've introduced the R five, you, you know-
Well, it's easier to introduce the R five because we can never hide then a place to live. But we're not.
No, I think, I mean, the-
Legally, I don't think-
Right now, if they can have the, they can have exactly what they have now in terms of square footage, without any, without any approval from anybody.
If we deny the request and deny the R five-
Well, let's, let's see, I think she has something to say.
Yeah, uh, it's, you can't find a double wide with that square footage.
Well, Ethan? You say that you have a source, that they have an old Y with twelve eighty?
We didn't research that, what we researched was if they went to the double wide, they could have a double wide format.
What, at what size?
But is that, is that a product that's available on the market?
It's not available. So the only, the only thing that she can do is put it sixteen by eighty. I have her home state. Because, I mean, we can force her to build a house. Or nobody can, really. If they prefer to live in a mobile home, they have the right to do that. And like I said, she was there before anybody else was there. I know the...
So it's, yeah. But it's a matter of price, I think, on her side.
Yeah, well, it's a matter of, a matter of reason for somebody.
So your comment as to the legality of remaining R2 and issuing a variance...
Well, Robert said that you cannot do that.
Right, because both...
I get it.
They're allowed an R2.
Yeah, no, I get it.
You can't have a variance. I mean, it's like...
For something that's prohibited. I, I understand the rule of the law on it. And that's what makes this difficult is, you know, trying to do the right thing for people. And do it within the framework of, you know, what we've been given. Ma'am, have you, I don't know very much about dimensions and sizes and things like that, but the, the size that you have now is no longer available, is what I'm hearing, correct? So if you, if you found a double-wide that's comparable... Now, again, we're splitting hairs here because it says it's supposed to be the exact square footage or, or less. What if the double-wide's sixty square feet more than what's there now?
Why does it have to be the same size? I mean, because we gotta be keeping the food from the creek.
Well, it's because the mobile home isn't a non-conforming zoning, is the, is the... I mean, I'm with you, I hear you. I wanna figure out a way to, to make this work. But you're in a zoning that does not allow mobile homes at all. And you've been grandfathered in, and you can replace what is there. But you can't do anything in excess of what is there. But the problem you have is that the, the market has changed and what's available to purchase is not the same as it was in ninety-three. So I mean, Ethan, is somebody gonna go over there and measure the darn thing? I mean, if they go get a double-wide and it's sixty feet bigger than what it is now...
I'm sure they will. I mean, there's no question about it.
The building's...
See, the fact is that people don't want the mobile home close by, period.
Yeah.
I mean, that's all. Yeah. I mean... It's, it's all a matter of economics. I mean, not everybody can build a house today.
I, I get it.
Yeah.
I mean, a twelve-hundred square foot house today versus six, seven years ago is a whole different animal. I, I understand.
Like I say, I was there, it's not to say that I was there before any of all the paradise.
So, so Ethan, the...
Actually, that, that land I was there, they said it would get hurt for subdivision if someone owned it now.
So the mechanism, Ethan, to catch the discrepancy in the square footage would, would be when they applied for permanent power at that location?
I expect so.
I, I don't know who's gonna measure the thing and...
They'll see we will have it on a primary foundation.
The power, the power company doesn't look at a zoning to approve the power.
You can Google it, there's, there's the ability to have double wides or single wides at twelve-hundred-and-eighty square feet.
What are you looking at? What, what did you... You just Googled it? Okay.
Just to see if that was available. Factory Direct Mobile Loans dot com.
So you guys are pressing to maintain, stay within the square footage.
Personally, it being larger for me personally is not an issue. However, the legality of the current zoning is an issue that's, you know, above our pay grade, which is free for those listening at home. But I wanna do the right thing for people.
Right, for her.
You know, for them. They, no fault of their own this happened. But I, but I understand the legality piece, and I certainly understand not rezoning it to R5. We just opened up a Pandora's Box there. But I've talked too much.
Any other comments? Any motions?
I make a motion that we approve it to put a mobile home of the same size that is presently looking.
Which really is a motion to deny.
Which is a motion to deny. To stay non-conforming and deny. Agreed? Yeah.
Whatever it is, it's a twelve-hundred-and-eighty dollar, a twelve-hundred-and-eighty square feet now. What's the difference if it's a newer one or a normal one?
Yeah, so...
But what's your...
But, but are you careful to deny them what's been...
It, it is, it's a, it is already zoned properly for what she has.
Correct.
So she's got a stake in the form...
You would be denying her request to be R5.
Basically, to deny her request.
And so she would continue to stay R2.
Correct, with the same restrictions that, you know, are binding to what's there now.
Yeah, her grandfather calls, that's it.
Yeah.
Is that your motion? Second?
Reluctantly.
Chris, reluctantly? All in favor of denial to try and stay within conforming size? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it to deny. All right, the next one.
To clarify to her, I guess we need to make sure that the fact that we deny the rezoning doesn't prevent her from replacing the mobile home.
Absolutely.
Right. And it doesn't prevent you from going to the commissioners, maybe?
Correct.
Yes, this is in the county.
This is in the county, yeah. All right. Next one's in the city. No, not Sandra Milton. That is a no-show, right?
Benjamin.
Cordova.
Yeah, Sandra is a no-show. Benjamin Cordova, Transitional Residence Two, from R6 to R7, nineteen-oh-five Abutment Road. Seems pretty straightforward.
I can motion me approve.
Second.
Jody makes the motion, Octavio seconds, all in favor?
All opposed. But before we move on, could I offer a suggestion going forward? Just a little housekeeping suggestion. Maybe before we start the meetings, we, you know, once we've called the meeting to order, we maybe do just a brief roll call. Because we've had several of these folks that we've gone through a full board presentation only to find out that they're not here. And it's, you know, the people that are here for other requests and different things, it's just, just wasting time. So may, maybe when we call the meeting to order, we just kind of check off to see that folks are here before we go through the, the whole process only to find out they didn't come.
Good idea.
Let's do that. Do it next one.
I'd save Ethan five minutes of yapping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What else?
I think we got anything, do we, Jake? I think unless somebody has anything to discuss, suggest we adjourn.